All right, good evening. We'll call tonight's meeting to order for November 8th. Mr. Metz, when you're ready, please call the roll.
Sam Cornwall?
Here.
Roger Daniel?
Here.
Greg Immerick?
Here.
John Langkorn?
Here.
Paul Noonie? Todd Moore?
Here.
Will Parsons?
Here.
All right, please join us. Thank you. Please join us for the Pledge of Legions.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the liberty and justice for all.
Next on our agenda is our meeting minutes from September the 13th and October 19th. Any corrections, revisions to minutes? Okay, do we have a motion to accept minutes?
I motion.
Okay.
Will Parsons?
Sorry, yes.
Todd Moore?
Yes.
John Langkorn?
Yes.
Greg Immerick?
Yes.
Roger Daniel?
Yes.
Sam Cornwall?
Yes.
Thank you. This brings us now to our first case. Public hearing tonight, a request by applicant Ala Sawadash for approval of a conditional use to allow automotive sales and leasing at 316 South Brill Boulevard. Mr. Metz, I'll let you take the case.
Good evening, Planning Commission. So tonight, we have a request by applicant Ala Sawadee for approval of a conditional use to allow automotive sales and leasing at 316 South Brill. This case mount may sound familiar. Actually, last November, we had a previous applicant come in, start an automotive business there through zoning violation letters. We got the applicant to come in and apply. Completely different applicant, but as you can see in the picture, they're operating a automotive sales and leasing building there. So, per the Middletown, City of Middletown zoning map and Middletown Development Code, the property is located in the B2 district where automotive sales and leasing is considered a conditional use that requires review and approval by the Planning Commission when the property is less than four acres. Here's the property. It is on the very far edge of the B2 district, surrounded by O1 to the north and then R3 to the east and west. The B2 district, the purpose of the B2 district is to provide for areas of the city that will contain a wide variety of commercial and office uses to meet the needs of the region that require access to major arterial streets and are in close proximity to major residential neighborhoods. Wanted to provide the principally permitted uses table showing that automotive sales and leasing within the B2 district is permitted with standards as previously mentioned. And those standards mean that the lots must be no smaller than four acres in size with a minimum lot frontage of 200 feet. The property does not meet those requirements, which would mean that the property could only be approved for that use through a conditional use. Additionally, other permitted standards would, are all outdoor display, storage and sale facilities must be screened. The use shall be located on arterial street as designated on the official thoroughfare plan. It is. No outdoor loudspeaker shall be permitted within the hours of 8:00 PM to 8:00 AM when adjacent to a residential district, which it is. The use shall meet the all state of the higher requirements, and automotive sales and leasing must be located on a lot with a permanent principal structure. Parking space requirement, automotive sales and leasing, one space per 100 square feet of indoor floor area. The approximate floor area is 3,600 square feet. There's not enough parking for it. And then, the, based off the 2021 comprehensive plan land use map, it's neighborhood mixed use, which is defined as primarily small-scale, commercial, office, medical, and service uses that cater to the surrounding residential uses or neighborhoods with secondary uses that also include residential. Public notice was published in the paper and letters were sent to all property owners within 200 feet of the property or contiguous. All letters and emails that were received were forwarded to the Planning Commission. The review criteria for the conditional use approval, decisions on the conditional use application shall be based on consideration of the following review criteria. All conditional uses shall be subject to review under the criteria of the section as applicable and may be subject to additional use-specific standards. The proposed conditional use is established as an allowed conditional use in the applicable zoning district. The proposed use is consistent with the spirit, purpose, and intent of the master plan and the general purpose of this code. The proposed use complies with any use-specific standards as may be established for the use. Any building or structure constructed, reconstructed, or altered as part of a conditional use in a residential zoning district shall, to the maximum extent feasible, maintain the exterior appearance of residential buildings of the type otherwise permitted and shall have suitable landscaping, screening, and fencing wherever deemed necessary by the Planning Commission. The proposed use will comply with all applicable development standards except as specifically altered by the Planning Commission in the approved conditional use. The proposed use will be harmonious with the existing or intended character of the general vicinity, and that such use will not change the essential character of the same area. The proposed use will not involve uses, activities, processes, materials, equipment, or conditions of operation that will be detrimental to any person's property or the general welfare by reason of excessive production of traffic noise, smoke, fumes, glare, or odors. The circulation on and access to the property shall be so designed as not to create interference with traffic on surrounding public thoroughfares. The design of the building structures in site will not result in the destruction, loss, or damage of natural scenic or historic feature of major importance. The proposed use will not impede the normal or orderly development and improvement of the surrounding property for uses permitted in the district. Wherever no specific areas, frontage, height, or setback requirements are specified and provision for specific conditional uses, then such use shall be subject to the site development standards for the applicable zoning district. The Planning Commission shall be authorized to waive or modify requirements that are, that apply to the conditional use as may be necessary to achieve compatible development with adjacent land areas as well as the interest of the community in general, where the Planning Commission finds that such waiver or modification will further the protection of the general welfare, protect individual property rights, and ensure that the conditional use will meet the intent and purpose of this code. And the Planning Commission may deem, may also impose additional conditions, guarantees, and safeguards as it deems necessary to protect the general welfare and individual property rights and ensure that the conditional use will meet the intent and purposes of this code. That ends my staff report, and I did not, the applicant is present.
Any questions for Mr. Metz before we open the public hearing? Okay. This is a public hearing? Do you have a question, Greg? Okay. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, please come forward. What's where you in? Please come up over here, sir, to the, to the front, yes. Good evening. If you would, please state your name and address for the record.
Sure. My name is Dean Sawadee, and address 5692 Safari Drive, Liberty Township. This is a residence. The address for the business, 316 South Brill Avenue, I mean Boulevard, sorry.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony? You're about to give the board the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thanks. So, thanks for having me here. Good evening to everyone. My name is Dean Sawadee, and I'm gonna be as forthcoming as I can be out of respect to your time this evening. Previously, I was in a meeting with a gentleman who owns the building at 316 South Brill Boulevard, and he stated that the building is a former bank. Then, there was another usage of the building, which is a check max. These companies, most of them went out of business for some reasons, and later on, there was a dealership. I have submitted a couple of applications to the city, and I worked with Mr. Metz behind me. Then, there is some issues that I believe with the zoning code. In a nutshell, what I'm trying to present to you tonight, something very simple, that fortunately, Mr. Metz probably did not have a full understanding for the presentation that I kinda brought with me the other day when I met with him, that I met with his manager. We are not intending to kind of bring vehicles to the place because it's not set up for that. We're very similar to the usage that was approved by the city before, which is the check max. We are a, not a retail business. We are just a car rental company. However, the concept of the car rental is not as being understood by many people, where you have tons of vehicles, or 10, 15, just like you walk to Enterprise, similar to the one up street. We are a very small business. We only have about 10 vehicles, and those vehicles are leased to people that comes in a specific visit to the Children's Hospital in Clifton. So, it will be so not conventional for someone to drive all that distance and come and see me for any reasons. Those 10 vehicles, 15, whatever we have, they are always in that area serving these people, and they live in a Stetson Square, which is a kinda adjacent to the hospital. The reason why we came up here, because we couldn't find a building in Cincinnati. Most of the places either too high, or the zone was changed, or no one wanna lease them out. We just want a place to hang the license. That's just in a flat, simple English as we understand. Again, the building sits in a very unique way from the, kinda the highway, which is not really suitable for us to entertain the business that Mr. Metz or someone else thought of. We are not going to bring vehicles and start kinda condensing the place with that. No, we are not retailing. We don't welcome, excuse me, general walk-in, like a gentleman or lady walk into our place and say, "I wanna lease the vehicle." At that time, we do not entertain that at all. Those 10 vehicles are just with people that comes to the Children's Hospital because they have leukemia, cancer for their kids, and they just wanna stay with them, and that's, that's what's going on. And I have communicated with several agencies, like the Ohio Dealer License, which is responsible also for this section of the retail and car leasing and renting, and they don't have any problem. They sent me the license. I did not see any problem. The place inside seemed to be very suitable for what we do. It has a counter in the middle. I'm not sure if any gentleman here walked before to check max prior to this, and saw how the setup is kinda a bunch of counters, and we have a computer there, we have a printer, and we just helping these people with the, sometimes I go down all that distance because I live in Liberty Township. I go all that distance, after I print the documents to them, and I give it to them. The purpose of that building is just a place to hang our license. And for us really to bring vehicles and start doing the business in a bigger picture, I don't think so. This is what we going to entertain. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Sawada?
Do you have a license to sell vehicles?
We don't have a license to sell a vehicle. We have a license to rent and, just renting.
No, no.
Go ahead, sir.
So, you're leasing your vehicles like online? Is that what it is?
No, online. No, online. Because, again, there are only 10 vehicles, and we know our people. Most of these people, sometimes they are contracted with the Children's Hospital because some of them overseas, so they come to the Children's, and we go to the airport. We give them the vehicle after we print the document, face-to-face kinda business.
If that's the case, why up here does it say some auto sales, and you have cars laying out there?
That, that was the previous.
Oh, previous, okay.
Yep. That was the previous automotive place that went in there and had operation there for a while.
Oh, okay.
That did, auto leasing.
Yeah, that's a business. But let me tell you, please, something, as I can see the picture. Thank you, Mr. Metz. The outside sign seemed to be kind of not suitable for the view. We did cover it with a vinyl that I ordered specifically, so it's kinda flat white. And for the sign also, or the banner that someone been hanging there, it's also not a business kind of, a type of clear business. We did order a banner from a specific company in Westchester, and they did hang it in a very unique way that really kind of fits for a professional type of business, and we did some trimming and cleaning for the area.
How many employees do you have?
I'm sorry, sir?
How many employees?
Just myself.
Just yourself?
Just myself, yes, sir.
You, you mentioned earlier that you had a conversation with the prior, the prior owner of the building, or the conversation you referenced?
The current one, yes, sir.
Did he mention at some point that, while this is a little different business model with leasing the car, that Planning Commission rejected a prior request to allow for cars to be placed there? At that point, it was auto sales, I believe, but did he mention that to you at all?
The gentleman we met, too, the owner of Peak One LLC, he mentioned that there was a dealership prior to our coming, but they received a letter of denial under some sort of code of the city. And from then, they continued the business until these guys decided to move. After I kinda saw their license in the system, which is public information, sounds like they moved to Beauchamp area.
So, one of the issues that we run into with this particular location, and looking at the zoning code because of its location, the restaurants and other, other businesses, when we look at the code, for instance, whether or not that this would be consistent just in terms of the overall lot space itself?
Yes, sir.
And you see here that the conditional use, what you're asking, is very similar to what was rejected in a prior case, although you're not selling cars, but the same issue that essentially created the problem in the last case, this becomes a problem for you as well. But, let me ask you this. In terms of just looking within the City of Middletown to see if there's another viable space for you to do this type of business, I can understand why you would wanna service folks who may need that type of, you know, to lease a car. Is there any other spaces or anything else that you've looked at within Middletown?
We did our own diligence, and we searched around. Unfortunately, we couldn't find something that's safe and secure. Whether, whether it's Cincinnati, Hamilton, Middletown, couple of places were kind of way too high, or they, they are adjacent to garages, so they want to rent the whole place. But my understanding also, I wanna clear this view to the respectful committee also, that I am totally different from what's in the image. It sounds like this gentleman was putting his vehicles in the customer parking lot, stating that this is a former bank building, and those parking lot where he had those designated for mail, UPS, FedEx, customers, visitors, you name it. No. In the back of the building, there are about nine spots, and currently, I'm only taking one spot for a vehicle that I have. And again, I'm not anticipating to run my business where I need to park vehicles or start doing any kind of transaction in the area at all. Most of the time there, I'm by myself or doing some documents. If someone passed by, you will see there is a red Honda Odyssey, that it's my own personal ride, and that's about it.
Are you confirming that you're working there now?
I am, in conditional, under condition. I'm not really operating 100%. I kinda held everything until this meeting come through, and I was hoping that the committee will, will also help me in viewing the place as a clear business because it's, a lot of areas around us, there are smoke shops. Today, I was in the Across Street Plaza, and there are a lot of activities going on, people left and right, and I'm, I thought, you know, bringing a nicer business to the area could be an advantage or a plus. But if the city or committee worried about, you know, vehicles being there, and the building is not suitable for that, I want to confirm that we are not going to use it in a way that people understand is a car leasing. It's a place that we decided to use just because of hanging the license theme or understanding, that's all.
I'm curious. That's, that's a big building, just for yourself, and a place to hang the license?
Yes.
Why, why do you need so much space?
Actually, it's not a, a big building, sir. Inside, which is, you know, you're more than welcome to come in and take a look. There are kitchen, a couple baths, and on the galley area or in the main area, there's like a big counter that looks like the check and max used for people coming in and sign the lease or sign their documents, titles, so on. Yes, sir. And in the back, there's like a canopy, which sounds like because of the drive-through in the bank. Right now, we have no use for it at all.
Just one other question, quickly. How many cars do you propose, if you were to use the back lot, or how many cars are you proposing, are you asking us to approve? Would it be five, 10? What would be the number of cars you would have?
Five. Five for four, just in the back. And on the side, that's totally not something I'm going to entertain at all, because I, you know, from my experience, as I used to be a finance manager at Joseph Chevrolet, we always have the space for customers and visitors, FedEx, UPS. I'm just, you know, against the way that gentleman was parking his vehicles. Self-speech. But in the back, like I said, I count about seven to nine, along with the, you know, the white lines, and I, I'm not anticipating to move more than four or less. Like I said, the, the people that we have, they are in a special need to stay in the hospital with their kiddo because there gotta be someone with their kid during the infusion process, and they are not anticipating to come and drive all the distance to Middletown.
Just to be clear, so the car, there will be some stored here, but they're transported to them in Cincinnati, is what you're saying?
Not really. The only, like, vehicles I'm gonna have, honestly, is just three or four vehicles that I have to have by law. The, the dealer licensing, they, when they issue the license to people, they want to see some sort of real fact in the ground, like you have lights, you have vehicles, you have some computer, printer, something going on. Yes, sir.
So, the majority of them are stored elsewhere, then?
The majority of them already, like, with our people in Clifton. Some of them, they use Northern Kentucky Children. There is, there is another hospital that work in adjacent or kinda cooperation with Children's Hospital, and I forget the name, maybe St. Mary's or something like that. And most of them either in Northern Kentucky, Highland Heights and Clifton area. Yes, sir.
Walk me through the process. If someone needs to actually lease a vehicle, how do they do that with you?
I'm sorry?
If someone wants to lease a vehicle, how do they do that with you today?
If someone, you mean like a regular person like yourself coming in, or just one of the?
Oh, your client, your current client base?
The, the people that we have come into Children's Hospital, they pre-communicate with us via the phone or the, via the new kind of channels like WhatsApp or these social tools. On the day of the 25th, I'm gonna be available in Cincinnati. I would like a vehicle. Okay, well, I have a vehicle that's in order in Clifton, and it's about to end tomorrow. I can switch you to that vehicle, and we go from there.
Okay. So then, if I had the capability of, as a person outside of having a kid at the hospital or had a tie to the hospital, it sounds like I would still have the same availability to be able to lease. Am I incorrect in that?
I'm, I'm sorry. I'm having a hard time hearing you.
So, what is the difference from someone else not having that availability to rent or lease the vehicle? Because it doesn't sound like there's a, a difference.
Like a vetting process? Are you saying, like, how do you, how do you know for sure it's, there's the people at the hospital?
Correct. Because you're saying that's your client base, but it still sounds like someone can, off the street, can actually lease.
Negative, because here's, here's, here's the difference. If someone like you wanted to lease a vehicle from me, first of all, my vehicles are not Enterprise or Budget. It's not like the one you walk up the street and get this Durango with all bells and whistles, and, you know, they sign 10,000 documents electronically. My vehicles are, some of them Honda Odysseys at 2012, '13 with a little bit more miles, and that's what these families want, because some of them come with six kids, five kids, four kids. Some of them come with their families. That's what they want. The Dodge Grand Caravan. And in a, in a regular way, you know, for us as Americans, this is not type of a ride that we would like. We want a newer vehicle, especially for people, you know, going to cities or states. Something that is not gonna cut off in the road. Most of these peoples, they just sit in Clifton, in Stetson Square kinda residence, and they barely use the car, but it's for emergency use. That's how we put it.
How are you cleaning them up when you change clients?
Right. So, we have a gentleman in Cincinnati by, by Short Vine Street that kinda we contract sometimes. He goes with the vehicle, clean it up, and also, he does light mechanic work, oil change, brake pads, and if there's a major thing, we have a, a company called Tripoli. It's over in Exit 9, and he does the major work, like transmission work like that. In this area, unfortunately, we don't know much people. Even I lived in Liberty since 2019, but I wanna say I'm, I'm not really familiar much with people here, yes. Or places to fix the vehicle.
Thank you, sir.
Can I, just one last thing. So, with, with the people, are they put into contact with you directly by the hospital? Like, if I had to fly my, my kid into Cincinnati, and I say, "I need a car," the hospital says, "Here's this number, call you," or they just, they land here, they Google, "I need to rent a car," and they find you?
No, no. So, Children's Hospital, Children's Hospital is like totally an entity that doesn't facilitate something like that. That's in their own. And the reason why they come to me, because with international or in their country, driver license, it's very hard for them to obtain something here because these companies cannot verify driver records. So, for them to come here and start dealing with Enterprise sometimes, for example, I dealt with a friend of mine who went to Massachusetts Hospital for an eye doctor, and I remember a company there quoted him a price for $2,900 a month. This is how kinda grimy it gets sometimes. So, again, I know it's something unique. I know it's something probably never seen before, but I have been doing this for a while. I was an employee of Children's Hospital myself, long time ago, and these vehicles are not up to the standards that you see in huge place, humongous place like Enterprise or Budget, where you walk in and you see these brand-new vehicles, and they have all kinda insurance on it. No, we are kinda way smaller.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, so is anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the proposed variance? If that's all the testimony you have, sir, that's fine, and we appreciate, appreciate your testimony.
Thank you, thanks.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the proposed conditional use? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing. We'll ask for staff recommendation.
Staff recommends, based on the staff report provided, staff recommends to nile the conditional use application for 316 South Brill Road, Middletown, Ohio 45044, to be utilized for automotive sales and leasing. It's not congruent with the neighborhood. It's not congruent with the comprehensive plan. It's not congruent with the other uses that are in the area currently. Also wanna mention that Chapter 2505 and 2506 are the appeal case, cases. So, Ohio Revised Code 2505 and 2506, if need be, if you would like to appeal any decision, that's where you'd find it. That ends my staff report. Thank you.
Okay. Any comments from the Planning Commission? I mean, I certainly understand that you are trying to help folks obtain a car. One of the issues is, it's, it, there's no way to determine in any reasonable way that that could be unique only to Children's Hospital. This is fundamentally still a sales and leasing question. And I would point again to the master plan that's been referenced. Planning Commission has opposed prior requests, very similar requests, and I would cite Review Criteria Number Two and Six, proposed use being inconsistent with the master plan, and that it's not consistent with the usage as defined in Number Six. So, I would certainly be in favor of denying. Any other comments?
Oh, just check max been empty.
Well, so in November...
Well, so in November of, well, Cash Maxx was the last permitted business to operate at 316 South Brielle. It was empty for a while. The previous tenant was the Soliic Auto Care Company that started in there. They were in there probably about eight months before we were able to get them out. And they left in probably December or January of this year. Their application was denied in November, so roughly 10 months.
We thought we probably denied him, so.
I move that we deny the application for a conditional use.
Okay.
And that's based off of review criteria two and six.
Two and six.
Yes.
Sam Cornwall? Yes, to deny. Roger Daniel?
Yes, to deny.
Greg Immerick?
Yes.
John Lankorn?
Yes.
Paul Nanny? All right, he's not here. Todd Moore?
Yes.
And Will Parsons?
Yes.
Okay, that brings us to our next case. This is a request by applicant Mitchell Foster for approval of conditional use to allow a religious place of worship at 1735 South University Boulevard. Mr. Metz?
Thank you, Mr. Moore. So to follow up on that, it is a conditional use application for 1735 or 1727. The applications that we have list both. This is for a religious place of worship. The subject property is currently zoned B3 General Business District per the Middletown Development Code. The purpose of the B3 General Business District is to provide for intense commercial and office development in close proximity to interstate and high-volume streets that can provide needed goods and services to residents of the city, region, and beyond. This district is most appropriately located adjacent to freeway interchanges and along major streets. You can see on the eastern portion of the property connects to an I-2 zoning district, which is AK. It is within the B3 district here. And then we also have residential across the street and then B2. As you see here, religious places of worship are a conditional use in all residential, office, and business districts. And then it's permitted with standards within all BC and UC sub-districts. I've included the permitted with standards just to give you an idea of what would be permitted with standards in the BC and UC sub-districts. All buildings shall be set back a minimum of 25 feet from the lot lines. New uses on the lot shall be with primary access to major arterial, minor arterial, or collector street. And parking space is required. One space per four fixed seats in the main assembly room or one space per four persons at max capacity, whichever is greater. These standards do not have to apply to this property. I just wanted to give you some kind of understanding what you'd look like or what you would review if it was in the BC or UC sub-districts. Since it's not, and it's conditional use, that's completely up to your discretion. I've already included the parking space. The 2022 Comprehensive Plan Land Use Map labels this site as industrial, which is defined as primarily a mix of light, heavy, and high-tech industrial uses with secondary uses that include office warehousing and storage. Notes requirements, public notice was published in the paper and letters were sent to all property owners within 200 feet of the property. All letters and emails that were received were forwarded to Planning Commission. I received none. You received none as well, as far as I'm aware. The review criteria for the conditional use is exactly the same as it was for the last application. I can read that if you'd like. And then, one additional thing that I wanted to mention is that this property has been in use as a religious place of worship. The applicant originally applied in October of 2021, but did not supply a floor plan nor were the permit fees paid for, therefore, the certificate of occupancy was canceled. That's the only additional background information I have. Applicant reapplied, same applicant. It's time they came through for zoning as well, and now they're in front of you. That ends my staff report. The applicant is present. Do you have any questions?
Are we talking about just the main, the Hills building and not the strip center part of it?
It's not the Hills.
The old Dillmans.
Target.
I want to guess the old Dillmans.
Yeah, but it was Hills.
Dillmans, the Save-A-Lot?
Yeah.
The main, the black roofed building?
Let me go back.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, where it says for rent?
I believe it's right here. The applicant could correct me if I'm wrong.
It's actually, we occupied the whole thing. Can I come up?
Well, when they open up the public hearing, but I believe it's in this section.
You're right.
Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Metz? Okay. Well, this is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, please come forward. If you would, sir, just please state your name and address for the record.
Mitchell Foster, address 9013.
Swear the testimony, you're about to give the board's truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
Thank you guys for your time. We actually occupy the whole thing. Our daycare is on the other side of it. My wife, she couldn't be here, she's still at the daycare. But the reason why we cut things off the first time is because we didn't have total control of that building. The person that had it, he had COVID. And when we applied, we couldn't, didn't make any sense because it was still in his name and it was still in his church's name. And for what? The understanding that we got that he was already using it for a church and he had already been approved by the, you know, by the city. So I couldn't get anything done. That's why I pulled my name back and I told the owner. But one of the things that we've done, because we've had that daycare for six, seven years, and we've kept the place clean and we've kept people out. We've probably invested over 20-some thousand dollars of keeping vandalism and even you see the Save-A-Lot where people were living in there. And so we've did a great job of keeping it clean around there and keeping vandalism. I'm also, no, Todd, I'm also the director of the Hope House. So it gives us an opportunity to bring people to that, couldn't go to a normal church there to have service. So that's pretty much, I want to give you an explanation why we pulled our, you know, our application back because the gentleman, the church still owned it and they still wasn't leased. And so, but we kind of occupied the whole building because we have the daycare and the owner likes for us to take care of it.
So it was operating as a church?
Hmm.
It was a previous church there?
It was a church previous there. I don't know what their name is, but I know the gentleman died. But they could not have got their water cut on, but I know they had temporary use to be able to operate.
Okay.
Dr. Foster, are you currently providing church services at the facility now?
Yeah, it was just kind of meeting there. A spanning group, not myself.
Okay.
But a spanning group had been meeting there. And so I told them, I said, listen, I got to get this stuff right. So that's why I did what I did.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Foster?
What made you decide to make it right now?
Huh?
What made you decide to make it right?
Because once it got into our name and we got total control of that whole side, we didn't have total control of that whole side.
When did you get control?
Probably like six months ago, six, seven months ago. But there was so much stuff going on. I mean, there was break-ins there. We had to just, we, like I said, we spent a lot of money, sir, trying to, you know, board it up, get security there and just, it just was a lot.
It is a big homeless area back there?
Yeah, well, in the back, in the back where we had to literally, if you can go back there now, we put, we spent $3,000 putting up a fence with a safe way out. And then we had to put up a fence around the electrical box because they were stealing all the copper. Then they were going on the roof. So we, the owner would do nothing. So we put a lot of money in keeping that particular area clean and you can go by there and safe. And so, in keeping them, we put a, from where I call it AK Steel, from the tracks coming in, the homeless people were coming in that direction. So we had, we put up a fence in the back to keep them out from coming onto the property. So.
Yeah, there's a big homeless camp behind Martin Excavating.
Yes.
Back there, yeah.
Yeah. And so we had the police, working with the police department to go back there to get them, so to get them in the shelter, but, you know, they won't come. So it's just been a, so that's, I hope I answered your question.
Do you currently, are you purchasing the building or just leasing?
We're trying to, Todd, but it's been a battle because the owner won't do anything. I mean, and we've spent, me and my wife, we spent a lot of money because, you know, right after the target and everything left, that place was a mess. That's probably where the homeless people camped out, they broke in. And so we took over the daycare and we built that up. And we've kind of been like the manager and trying to get him to sell, but he has not budged on that, so.
Yeah, the, one of the reasons I asked that was, it seems here that the intent is to grow the church. Just wondered, you know, since we're looking at conditional use, if maybe you were thinking of another place that maybe you'd want to grow the church outside that particular area or maybe that's where you feel your mission is at, so I just...
Well, we feel this there and the reason why, because Hope House is not that far and everything is just kind of close by. And so, and I think my thing is just helping people to be able to fulfill their gift and their talent and their vision. So that's kind of where I'm at right now. So my years of pastoring is over. I pastored Tristone for almost 20 years, so I just kind of help other people out now.
Any other questions for Dr. Foster? Sir? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Well, seeing no one to speak in opposition, we'll close the public hearing. Ask for staff recommendation.
Based on the staff report provided, staff recommends approval of the conditional use application for 1735 South University Boulevard to be utilized for a religious place of worship. It was previously approved back in 2021 for a religious place of worship. However, the applicant didn't submit a floor plan, didn't close out their certificate of occupancy, and didn't pay their permit fees, which is why it was, which is why it doesn't have its zoning right now. However, and although it doesn't match the master plan, it's not an inharmonious use. It's been currently a church. It was previously approved for a church. And it does not appear to be detrimental to the neighborhood.
Do we need a separate approval for daycare?
No, the daycare is already approved on its own.
Yeah.
And that's at a, I know it's in the same, same stretch, but it's its own unit.
Mr. Metz, so you're referencing one and six as far as review criteria, is that...
Yes, one and six.
Okay. All, yes, go ahead.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, we have staff recommendation for approval. We've looked at the review criteria. Do we have any other comments from the planning commission? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Sam Cornwall?
Yes.
Roger Daniel?
Yes.
Greg Immerick?
Yes.
John Lankorn?
Yes.
Todd Moore?
Yes.
Will Parsons?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening.
Thank you.
Any older new business?
Not that I'm aware of. Do you have any new business for me?
I know that you sent out an email about the, I didn't know if you wanted to reference that again, about the event in December for the planning?
Yes.
Okay.
So Will Parsons pointed out that there is, Miami Valley is having a planning and zoning workshop, December 1st, I believe. I sent that out last week or the week before, just letting you know that if you were interested and if you wanted to participate, that is something our department would pay for and allow you to attend. Currently, Todd and Will, you're the two, from both planning commission and Board of Zoning Appeals showed interest. Your tickets are already bought. We have two additional tickets that were already purchased, just in case when you go to the workshop, it'll be under Deborah National's name.
Is that on Monday?
Friday, I believe.
Friday or, yes, something like that, or Wednesday, I'm not sure. So if you'd like to attend, perfectly okay. If not, we also offer courses on that website, Planet Zen. So there's plenty of ways to get continuing education if you so choose. It's not, it's not necessary at all, but it's just an opportunity.
I was going to say, I've attended it a couple times over the years. You do see some interesting things from surrounding communities and what they're doing with their planning and zoning and just everything from sidewalks to you name it, everything that touches planning. I mean, it depends on what their focus is for that particular workshop, but I always found it interesting, so, pretty good stuff.
Hey, you put me down.
It is, it's Friday.
Well, John, we already, that work, we already have two extra tickets. So they bought two additional tickets. So we'll have you three then.
Okay.
Pull Sam or Greg in there. Roger? I know time is tight, it makes it rough. It's a Friday, I think. I just can't remember the exact...
I believe it's December 1st. I need to look at my phone.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Where I would go.
Yeah, see? Florida or planning meeting, okay, I'm going with you on that one, so. Well, that brings us, anything else, James? Anything else? Okay. That brings us then to adjournment. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Agreed? Okay, we are adjourned.
I was going to ask, James, you know those pop-up cell phone tent things that are around town?